Please join me in a moment of prayer or reflection. Will you take roll, please?
Archana Ellyard?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
John Mastin?
Here.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to review and accept the agenda for this session?
So moved.
Second. Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Archana Ellyard?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes. Okay. Item 3.1 is the discussion and possible action regarding resolution to accept membership in the Northwest Arizona Employee Benefit Trust. And Mr. Murray and Superintendent Asaya representing.
Correct. Did you want to have a motion open for discussion?
I would move we open for discussion.
Second. Archana Ellyard?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Madam President, members of the Board. It is recommended that the Governing Board approve the resolution to accept membership in the Northwest Arizona Employee Benefit Trust. Additional information was provided to the Board for your review for this meeting. I do have some items to present to based on the discussion at the work session. The Board members asked if I would put something together in regards to just a couple different plans that we could consider as far as payment premiums for the district and how the district would actually contribute towards those premiums. So during that work session, these were the items that I noted. There was a recommendation from a Board member to show what the true 15 and 1/2 percent premium increase would look like if we were to stay still with the LHS EBT. And then there was also a recommendation to see if we could propose what the premiums would look like if the district contributed 100%, 90%, and 80% of the employee premium. So passing 10% to the employee on the employee district, currently 100% funded district premium, making that showing what 90% would look like if the district contributed 90% and the employee contributed 10. And then an 80-20 model where the employee would contribute 20%. And then the final set of numbers there is for the retiree and proposing the premiums and the district contributions as a changing policy from $4,000, the district contributes for retirees, to what 70% would look like in a district contribution, 75%, and then 80% in those three examples. So that's what we'll just quickly review here. So in the 15 and 1/2 percent premium increase, this is the Gold Plan, High Deductible Health Plan, and Dental and Vision presented to us from ECA. This would be if we stayed with the 15 and 1/2 percent premium. The Vision Plan at the annual meeting, it was noted that that would increase by approximately 8% for Vision. So you can see the new premiums there for Vision. So if we remained with the LHS EBT with a 15 and 1/2 percent premium increase, meaning that our benefits would stay exactly the same as they are today, the district would now contribute $10,364.04 per employee, where as you can see this year, we're contributing $9,019.20. And see that that would have an annual increase of $712,000 from this fiscal year to next fiscal year if we remained with a 15 and 1/2 percent premium increase. Now for the NAEBT employee premiums, you can see here that this is the slide showing the NAEBT employee plan premiums in the comparison. So for the Gold Plan and the High Deductible Health Plan, you can see that they're left and right side of the screen, that if we remained fully funding the employee premium, it would be just under $9,400 for the year, annual premium for employee only. And then you can see the cost for employee plus spouse, employee child, employee children, and employee family. If the district fully funded employee premiums, like they are currently doing, that premium will increase from $9,019.20 to just under $9,400, as I mentioned, for an increase of just under $200,000 to the district. That's going, moving to the NAEBT, fully funding employees at 100%, paying for their premiums in full. If we take that same premium here that you see here, the 93-96, and then we separate that out and actually do a 90-10 split, you can see that the district would pay 84-56-72, and that the employee would then pay roughly $940. That would be the 10% portion. You can see that down at the very bottom that that would produce a decrease, actually save the district about $298,000, about $300,000 when you're comparing this current year premium to next year's premium. So the district would then just pay 84-56-72, that 90% rate, saving the district about $300,000. And then the 80-20 option that was asked for us to just show up here on the screen, you can see that again, still the 93-96-36 annual premium. If 80% was paid for by the district, 20% would go to the employee at just under $1,900. That would then save the district roughly $800,000 in premiums for medical.
Quick question, Mr. Murray. Having been in budget meetings past three years and not this year, what was our cost to raise wages? We always talk about that cost.
Yeah, the cost to raise wages 1% is roughly $230,000. And that's with all payroll taxes, everything being considered.
And that's across the board for all employees?
All employees.
So we're really talking about a 3% raise to all of our staff if we went to an 80% plan? Not that I'm going there, but I think it's very important that we understand that it's one pot of money that we deal with. And when we start talking about benefit cost versus salary, that there is a trade-off there. Your salary gets lower, the better and richer your benefits get. And so you kind of have to look at that total compensation figure when you start comparing us to other districts and so on around the state. But right there, that's enough to raise wages district-wide 3%.
Except that their benefits wouldn't get better, their benefits stay the same.
That wasn't the point. The point is that there's a trade-off. We currently, and I've taken a look at more than a dozen districts at this point across the state. In our state, Mrs. Roman, to your point, we have the richest benefit plan that I have seen. And if there's another one out there that's richer, please, somebody point me in that direction. Dependents are not covered. I've seen districts that are at 80% against the High Deductible Health Plan. I mean, we've got really, really great benefits. And I hear teachers come out and they say, well, we want, you know, competitive wages and we want our wages to be up at a certain point. Well, there are trade-offs that have been made on that statewide. So I'm, and I'm not here saying one way or another. I'm just saying that there will be a trade-off in M&amp;O for wages versus benefits. And that's why this is an important thing to look at, even if we do nothing with it.
And I don't disagree with what you've said. I was only quibbling about that we're giving them better benefits in lieu of a raise. That's not true. Their benefits remain the same. That's all I was, that's the only point that I was talking about.
Actually, if we go to NAEBT, they actually do get better. We're actually, and just the blue card alone.
Yeah.
The blue card that engages the entire Blue Cross Blue Shield Network nationally and internationally is a better form of benefit for our staff when you figure out that when we air evac somebody out of here, if somebody had a heart attack and they were air evacuated, they're not going to Phoenix, they're going to Vegas.
Yes.
And so having that entire network engaged is going to give them better options for treatment out of state, especially when the closest neighboring city is Vegas to us and not Phoenix.
So expanded access to benefits. But the benefits themselves are roughly comparable to what they have now. I know that there were some differences with the co-pays.
But don't even the prescriptions get better with what we're?
The costs are lower, the co-pays, the co-pays from some instances are lower in NAEBT plan.
Okay.
So the out-of-pocket costs are lower.
And is that the case in every case? Or are there some instances where they might pay a higher co-pay for prescriptions? Like some of the, I thought that they had different tiers of medications, and in some cases, the co-pay is a little bit higher. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, there's given rates.
Okay.
Okay. My concern is we know that medical costs are only going to get higher and higher and higher over the years. And we also know that we are, we have had inflation, although we're not calling it inflation. I think last year it was 1.8. This year it's 2.1, and next year it's predicted to be 2.3. So you add all of that up, I mean, you're almost into what you start calling inflation. It's starting. And what gets hit by inflation? Medical costs, medical expenses among your gasoline and other things. So once we start down that road, I just see this 1% this year, then next year it's going to be 2%, and then it's going to be 5%. I mean, it's just, it's just a dangerous road to start down unless you've got some parameters, something that will stop, will stop the bleeding at some point, because there will be bleeding at some point, because we already see that with our retirees. And I just, I hate to set that precedent and start that from happening. It's not that we can't do it, but I'm concerned.
There was some question at the budget meeting. I'm sorry if this is sort of mid, I assume you have more slides?
Yeah, just a few more. That's okay.
There was a question at the budget meeting about locking in the rate and the language that was used and whether or not we were misinterpreting that.
And that's something I will leave tomorrow to attend their annual meeting. And that's one of the questions that I have to get that clarified.
Okay. Because we're not sure if, there was some language about locking in the rate, and we weren't entirely sure if that meant what we thought it meant, which was that the rate would stay the same for the next three years.
Jamie Scholenberg is here with ECA, so she might be able to clarify that.
But we have to vote on this tonight, is that correct?
The resolutions.
Right.
I'd be really anxious to hear that answer.
The answer is that you can't lock the rate in for three years. What happens is, next year, when they, first of all, they're going to set the rates for 2021 at their renewal meeting this week. So on Friday, you'll know what that number is. And we gave you a projected number that is, could increase anything from 0.4% to 2.4% based on what they decide to do. Next year, they'll have the same renewal meeting, much as the LHS EBT Board does today. And if next year, they're looking at a rate pass, you would get a rate pass. If they were looking at a 3%, you would get a 3% on whatever. What they're going to do at the end of three years is they're going to take a look at your actual experience, and with the hopes that with that spread of risk over that larger population, that they'll be able to bring you down into the common rate structure, which would actually be lower than what you're paying today. But instead of looking at that every year, you know, that volatility, they were looking for a steady three years before they looked at moving you into a common rate structure.
So with that, just a quick question, because I'm confused a little bit on that one point. We have retirees that go and they retire, and the next year, they're not technically an employee, but the year after they are. How do we then differentiate them from the rest of the group? I mean, it just seems like this has been done very arbitrarily by NAEBT.
For that one year, they're differentiated because they're on PREO. They come back on PREO, then the following year, they're considered employees, and they pay the same insurance as everybody else.
My understanding, and this will have to have Mike clarify, I think, at the meeting this week, but my understanding is, is that if the district classifies them as an employee and they are receiving an active employee, all active employee benefits, they would not be differentiated into that separate rate structure.
So under your understanding, that if we had an employee who went on early retirement at 80% of their salary and came back with their retirement salary as well, even if they weren't directly district contracted for that year, we could still designate them an employee?
Again, I think that's why we would probably want to run by your.
Yeah, they're not technically under our direct employ for that year. They go to an outside company.
I have that specific question on my question list for this week.
Because then would they have to technically be designated as a retiree? Or could they be designated as a subcontracted employee for that one year?
I think that it's going to have to be voted on or at least discussed by the trustees who are present. I'm going to present our situation and what we have here, year after year after year with employees, and there's several of them in this room who separate for the year because they have to. And then they come back as full district employees again the second year. So I think that's going to be unique to our circumstance and not necessarily what the city may or may not be doing at this time.
Then add to that question. So if we are allowed to treat them as an employee with benefits, then would we then be allowed to treat their dependents the same with the, with insurance?
And that will be part of that question?
So then?
The question's going to be, what are they, what are they going to be classified as when they are on PREO? And that's going to be something we need to get from them. Are they looking at them as a retiree for that one year and then an active employee the following year? And if that's the case, then do they have to pay retire, the retiree rate for that one year and then come back as an active employee status for however long they're back with the district until they actually choose to retire?
We, this year, this next year, we'll only have four teachers coming back on PREO. And that would be about, it costs us about $35,000 to, if we were allowed to treat them that way. It would, it's not like we have 20 on PREO, it's for this year.
So we're here tonight to make a decision on this ahead of that meeting so that they can then accept us at their annual meeting? But we don't know how our employees are going to be treated and whether or not we have a locked rate or not on certain parts of the contract?
Well, we know that we don't have a locked rate for the three years. That was brought up during the Budget Committee meeting. The unknown at this point is what, what are they going to direct us, since we're on a separate rate structure? What are they going to call PREO? Are they going to allow us to treat them as an active employee still, even though we're not paying for them as a district for that one year? And allow them to still pay at the active retiree rate? Or are they going to say that that's a retired employee for the year, they're active year two when they come back with the district? And those, that's just something I have to get clarified.
My guess would be that that's exactly how it'll, it'll go. That's my guess. Because how many people do we have currently employed that went on PREO for a year within the last five years, came back the second year, and they're going to be rated like a regular, brand-new employee or a newer employee? And their children, I would assume, the same exact way. But in terms of the locked rate, I understood it that we were locked into, we were assured that it wouldn't go past 2.4, 2.3%?
For 2021.
Right. And that was my understanding of the locked-in part, is that they weren't sure what the rate was yet, but we were still assured that it wasn't going to be higher than the 2 point, I'm sorry, I totally forgot already, 2.4%, which was still lower than what we're looking at as an increase.
Correct. We were told to calculate a 2.5% to be safe, but it could be as low as 0.4, which would mean then everything we're looking at will be reduced accordingly to the 0.4 rate.
And if I may also clarify, my understanding then is that even though we're coming in at a different rate schedule, we're guaranteed for the next three years to only get the increase that the regular EBT gets. So we're not going to get a separate, higher increase based on our experience.
That's correct.
Okay.
And if I could also clarify one point, Mr. Mastin, the NAEBT has officially extended an offer of membership. And so what you're acting on tonight is actually whether or not to accept that offer or not. This annual renewal meeting is just something that Mr. Murray was invited to attend in order to see how that process works and provide him.
And I completely understand that. My concern is, is that we don't have the hard details in front of us. And because of that, we're being asked to vote to join NAEBT and dissolve our trust through a resolution process this evening. And I'm, it makes me a little leery, because while this is not something that's going to affect a huge amount of people initially, the school district operates a lot differently than cities do, where we can retire our people early and then bring them back into their roles. And so I don't want to put employees in position where they're paying a bunch of money. Now, that said, I am also not in favor of carving out a special plan for particular employees. In other words, if we look at the word equity and we understand the word equity as a district, the equity here is that we should be, we should be reimbursing at similar rates for similar situations. And if we look at what we're doing currently with the single retiree, not families, not spouses, but the single retiree, whatever it winds up being, whether it's 70, 75, or 80, and we've got three studies, and it could be something completely different, but whatever we do to do that, we're now committing in a policy change that we're going to do that moving forward. So we're putting more money on the table already doing that. And now because of certain circumstances within that, that we're going to put more money and commit to more money, I'm not sure that I'm necessarily 100% in favor of something like that, because we're singling out special situations. And so we don't necessarily do that with our, with our in-house employees. We haven't necessarily done that with retirees. And so now, because of an economic impact, we're going to pick and choose who we, who we give more money to and who we don't. I think that's problematic. And that's just my initial opinion.
It is a problem. And I thought about that. And, you know, we know that, we know in life that nothing can ever be created so that it's fair, it's just the way life is. We should always try to do that. But my thought is with PREO, a teacher doesn't just get to, can ask for PREO, but doesn't necessarily get to be approved for PREO. It's an honor to be asked to come back, to be accepted to come back. And because of that, this is just a way of acknowledging those teachers. And it just so happens, these four, this year, these four teachers coming back are just really outstanding teachers, and we're really lucky to get them back.
You're exactly right. And the reward is, is that if you look at somebody who's currently making average wage in the district at $52,000 a year, and that's the Auditor General's number, that's not me making it up. If they're making $52,000, they retire at 80% of that salary, and then they receive their retirement benefit. That means they come back at $76,000 a year. So they do get honored. They get a really nice, I'm not going to call it a raise, but they get that extra bonus of having to be able to work and retire simultaneously. So they do get a large cash infusion.
But I also want to point out that our classified staff are not making, will not be making $52,000 a year. And yet, what they're going to be paying as retirees for this is, I mean, just obscene. I don't see how they can do it.
Well, and I don't want to be delicate or harsh.
That's okay. I can take it.
But we're making choices.
I understand that.
When you've served 30 years and you get to retirement point, you're not at retirement age, you're making a choice to take an early retirement. And that choice is going to have a calculus to it. And I understand this is the first year that we're looking at this, and this is going to change your calculus a little bit. But there is a calculation that goes into early retirement. I have teachers that I, that I know outside of a boardroom and have taught my kids, and I see them at church and so on. They literally are calculating when to retire based on the state retirement system and how much they can leverage the system based on their individual situation. This is kind of the anomaly here based on that.
I understand that.
It's, and it's not that I don't wish them well, it's not that I don't want them to retire early if they can do it. But on the flip side of that, when you have a district that has taken a 24%, a 10%, and now proposed a 15.5% insurance cost increase in the past three years, there's something that needs to be done to get those costs under control. We just, as a district, cannot keep paying the money out. We're not getting it in, and we just cannot keep writing that check.
Well, and I'm looking right now at some people who didn't come back on PREO. And, you know, for a person such as that, this would be very, my thought, I'm just trying to be creative here and trying to think of all of the possibilities, which is just the way I think. But I'm very aware that what I'm proposing, and I'm not really proposing it, I'm just throwing it out there, would be very unfair to that person. Yet, if we could get that person's insurance as a retiree, at least that person's insurance paid for 100%, that person would gain something. So it's just, it's a very difficult thing to solve. I do have a question to ask Mrs. Walter. You said that your husband had retired from the city. Is the city paying his insurance benefits as a retiree? I've heard, I've had, heard two different opinions about what you said.
Yes, they are paying 95% of his health insurance.
They are? 95%? Okay. And this would be the same plan that he's in?
Correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, and I wasn't sure, Mr. Mastin, on your question on the PREO, we have, we have really two different things happening tonight. We have the issue of our retirees overall, and then we have the issue of the retirees who are coming back on PREO, which is a much smaller number. And so one of the things that, in the continuing of this presentation, Mr. Murray will be sharing, is a recommendation to increase the amount we are paying for our retirees' benefits as a result of the change in the plan. Currently, and this has been historically the case for all of our retirees, when our certified staff retire and come back on PREO, they are treated as a retiree for one year. We only give them the $4,000, plus they get the ASRS $1,800 towards their retirement for that one year, because they are working for a completely different organization. Our trust has determined to allow them to continue in our trust for that one year while they were employed with us on PREO. And then after they come back to us again as a, as a first-year teacher, they come back in as a new employee. And so the benefit hasn't been any different for anybody who retires. I'm not, and I kind of got the sense that, that we were thinking we were doing something different for employees going back.
No. My concern is, is that, is that we decide today to do something different. I'm all for raising, for raising it. And again, I will just tip my hat at $9,900 or 75%. I think that that is better than what we're doing for our single retirees today. We're currently at 4,000. Is that correct, Mr. Murray?
Yeah.
So we would go up to 75% of the premium, and we would change our policy not to say a fixed amount, but we would, we would put a percentage in, so it would automatically scale as premiums increase. The other thing is, is that when you look at the remainder, the remainder at that point would be lower than what a single person retiring would pay on the plan. So in my mind, if we do something in addition to that for PREO, we're then setting up a separate plan for only those with PREO. And I think- And, and I think that we're setting a dangerous precedent there, because we're classifying all of these employees as retirees, but we're setting up a separate class in there for PREO to try and, and offset that, or we're setting up a separate class for, you know, PREO independent, or however you want to term that. And so that's my concern. My concern is that we don't try and set up a, a special class for every situation we might face.
I, I see your hand. Can I, um, can I ask?
I don't know if I'm allowed to speak.
It's, it's a work session. I would, I would, but I, I did, can I, if you don't mind, Mrs. Cox?
Special, special session.
Or, what did I say?
Work session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Cox, I did hear you say something about separating dependents earlier. Can you, I wasn't sure, not to put you in the hot seat, hot seat, but...
Vice President Cox had mentioned she had a question about whether or not the dependent premium was going to be separated in some way. And my comment was the fact that with regard to retirees, we weren't trying to separate anything. It was going to be the same going forward as it always has been.
Okay.
Do you want to allow Mr. Murray to finish his presentation?
Oh, yeah.
Before we take any audience?
Yes. I will definitely allow time, though. Okay.
Okay, so just a couple, a few more slides. So NAEBT for the retiree, as Mr. Mastin pointed out, during the work session, it was proposed that come back with numbers calculating seventy percent, seventy-five percent, eighty percent. This particular slide shows district contributions at seventy percent, whereas right now currently, it's just a flat four thousand dollars right there. You can see that if the district contributes seventy percent of the annual premium, that would be this ninety-six hundred dollar figure here, that's seventy percent. Also, then taking eighteen hundred dollars off of that, that's what ASRS gives for retirees. Then the premium, the new premium would be the, the retirees' annual premium would be that twenty-three hundred dollar figure right there. Currently, it's around thirty-two hundred in the current structure. So that would be a reduction, annual reduction for the retiree at seventy percent.
So, um, this is, this is a different handout from what we got at the other meeting.
Correct, because these are the new, these were...
This is the seventy percent.
This is seventy percent, because we're calculating...
And what was this?
That was seventy-five, I believe, but the calculation was different. We're trying to, we're trying to, again, if we make changes here, we have to change policy. So if we're changing policy from four thousand dollars to a percentage, we want to make it as easy to interpret as possible. So the calculations are figured on the bottom line. So total contrib, total annual insurance, because you have to take medical dental vision, you can't choose or pick, it's all or nothing. The calculation is based on all of the benefits combined. Seventy percent is calculated based off of that bottom line number, which then, with the, with the subtraction there for the ASRS, gives you the new retiree annual projection for 2021, based on two and a half percent calculations. Again, this week, if the NAEBT says it's only a point four percent increase, then all of these figures will get changed to reflect that. But right now, this is at a full two and a half percent increase. You can see there, it's twenty-three hundred dollars in change for the retiree on the gold plan. The high deductible, high deductible health plan's a little bit less than that. So at seventy percent, this would be the new contribution rate for 2021 for retirees. So it's not going to be four thousand in this, in this scenario. It's now ninety-six fifty. That creates an increase of about two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars for the district if we were to move to a seventy percent contribution rate versus four thousand. You can see the premium minus the seventy percent minus ASRS gives you the retiree-only annual premium right there. At seventy-five percent, that increases the district contribution for retirees to ten thousand, three forty. It's about two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand increase to the district. You can see the premium, the seventy-five percent reduction, the ASRS reduction, that gives you an annual retiree-only premium of sixteen forty-six, seventy-six. Again, this is calculating at a full two and a half percent rate increase. And then at eighty percent, the district contribution comes to be about eleven thousand, thirty dollars, times roughly thirty-eight retirees. That would be currently on the retiree plan. It increases to almost three hundred thousand dollars in district contributions. And then you can see the annual premium is nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-one cents for retiree only. So that's your seventy, seventy-five percent, and eighty percent. Those were, that, that was everything I jotted down in the work session as far as taking notes on what the board members would like to see. So if there are any questions or clarifications.
Could you go back to the eighty percent?
Sure.
Slide? And then could you go back to the eighty percent slide for the employee?
Right there.
Thank you. So no, we're not vetting all this out today. Am I correct? Or are we planning to? Is that the thought process?
So actually, tonight would be the decisions to move forward, and then the board would direct the district to come back with a recommendation on the policy, or further discussion on the policy for our retiree contributions. We had not, well, I suppose we could also bring back our policy on the employee contribution as well. So tonight's decisions really are just to, whether or not to join the NAEBT, and then whether or not to dissolve the trust, current trust. As far as the information on the contributions, those are all work policies, so we would need to bring those back to take any action.
Mike, can you go up that one big slide?
That's for the retired.
That's me. And I'm, I'm looking at retirees' spouses. I'm looking at roughly fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars for both of us. To be honest with you, that's about forty-five percent of my income when I retire. Again, so I, I want, I want you to know that that's, you know, that's going to devastate me. You know, I, I can't live on an extra forty-five percent of that. That's why I came back the last two years. I, I appreciate all the other numbers. I appreciate the seventy, the seventy-five percent, the eighty percent. That's wonderful for a retiree. But then you throw on the spouse or the children, all the dependents, and it feels crazy. Right now, I'm paying four fifteen a month for my wife, and two sixty, three forty. So right now, I'm about eighteen percent of my, of my income when I retire. But I, I jump up to, you know, forty, forty-five percent. That's a, that's a big chunk of change for retirees. And there's, what, nine of us, I guess? About nine of us that have, that are going to be retired with dependents.
Yeah, and for next year, there were seven, I believe, maybe, could be, could be nine. The numbers are still a bit more than seven and nine.
So there's not a lot of us. It's not going to cost a lot of money, if I number down a bit. But, you know, just, just from my personal point of view, it's, it's huge money. You know, it's, it's a lot of money. It's a, a big chunk of what I'm going to do. As you know, this district has not paid a ton of money. We had a big freeze for ten years. So we were frozen for a long time, where we could not get, you know, we could not move up. I had the situation where I had to retire at a particular time on a ten-year window, or then I would start losing money in retirement. So I, I didn't have choice on that. I took two years off, retired, came back, happy not to be paying my part of it, but I'm still paying the four fifteen a month. But at, at this, and you're going to find most of those nine people, we're probably all about the same boat. So we're talking, you know, forty percent of our income, it's, it's impossible. After thirty-six years of teaching, also, Mike and I have had this discussion before, when we came into the district, people hired before two thousand five, two thousand four, we were told that our insurance would be covered until we're sixty-five. That was part of the reason I left California. I left twenty thousand dollars on the table in California to come here to raise a family because of I would be covered until I'm sixty-five. And then the board changed the policy. And I'm always afraid that, you know, every time I come along these meetings, the board's going to change the policy again. Well, that, that leaves me high and dry. Yet, at forty percent, you know, I'm going to have to go get another job, a permanent job. I'm going to have to something else. I don't want to. I think, I think I've earned, after thirty-six years of building this district, to where it is. I'm one of those building blocks. I, I think I've, I've earned better than that. And I hope that you guys take that into account when you start bringing your numbers, how much you're willing to give to retirees, against small, little pool of people. And I understand your point about, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to have sixteen different formulas. You want to have one formula, two formulas. But you really have to take care of the retirees, because the NAEBT has a different formula for retirees. So you have to have those two things separate. Although, as you're talking, I'm saying, that'd be wonderful. Put me in with all the employees as retiree. I'd love to keep those premiums just the way they are. I understand that's not possible, but at that fifteen thousand dollars, it's not possible for me to survive.
So, Mrs. Cox?
Please say your name first, please.
Jeff Cox.
I'm trying to get into the habit of saying your name first.
Jeff Cox.
I, I could do a better job of that, too. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Cox, you had mentioned something on the way in about the marketplace. Does any of that apply in these situations?
So... I'm Marsha Cox, I'm chairperson of EBT. What I had mentioned to Mr. Mastin was, one of the questions that I had, and I'm still a licensed insurance agent, have been for forty years. I don't sell insurance anymore because I have gray hair and I like to keep it. But, but I do actively stay in that circle. And one of the questions that I had, and I went out and looked for some advice and went to our legal counsel, was if you're an employee and you're offered insurance and are subsidized, and you hit a certain threshold, and as of 2020, it's nine point seven eight percent contribution, and your premium meets or falls, goes above that, you know, are you eligible to go out on the exchange and, you know, participate in that and receive any kind of a, some kind of a subsidy anywhere from a hundred to four hundred percent of the poverty level? Well, the question is, how does that affect retirees? And so that was my question that I've been kind of searching for answers for. And I mentioned to Mr. Mastin that the answer that I received back today was, that actually does apply to retirees in some shape or form with regard to purchasing coverage on the exchange. And from what I read, and the, the answer's a couple of pages long, and I'm happy to send it to you. I've sent it to the district office, but I'm happy to send it to anybody that wants to read it, because it came off of healthinsurance.org. The question, from the gist of it, it was, it was the same nine point seven eight percent answer. And it was, if the premium contribution that was available was, if, if it didn't meet the threshold, the same as an employee, that you could be eligible to receive the same type of subsidy if you were purchasing your insurance on the exchange. Now, does that mean that you get the money that the district would be giving to contribute? No. It just means that you'd have to go through those calculations, find out what's on the exchange, you know, for premium, you know, for coverage. And in our area, it's going to be a Blue Cross plan, most likely, a gold plan, a silver plan, or a bronze plan. The ones I looked at were HMO silver and gold plans with like a ten or fifteen or twenty-dollar copay, two thousand dollar deductibles, those types of things. But the subsidies, you know, for a fifty thousand dollar a year household income was pretty substantial. So that was basically what I was telling Mr. Mastin.
So, and then, and then to clarify, is there anything that requires a retiree to be on our plan? And is there anything that would stop somebody on PREO from taking a year in the marketplace and then coming back?
Everything is subject to open enrollment as far as being off or on something. So in regards, and, and, you know, obviously, you should go to a licensed agent that's selling insurance, that type of a thing, and get those answers. And then I would also get some more information from legal, that kind of a thing. But if I were an employee getting ready to retire, and I was, you know, looking, going into the open enrollment season, if you will, and I was looking at, you know, participating as an employee and under PREO, I would, I, my thought process was, I'm going to be looking at another open enrollment after a year of being an employee under PREO. So I would have an open enrollment as an active employee in a year. And so my thinking was, well, if I stayed, if I went to the exchange program for a year, and I knew what my options were as my premium that way, I'm not going to be on the retiree plan that the district offers, but I'm also not paying those premiums. And that, that's kind of the reason why I was looking for an option if, if it was me doing that, you know, what my...
Is that through Arizona ACA, or is it the federal?
That's the healthinsurance.org, and I'm happy to send you the link.
But I mean...
Federal, federal ACA.
It's a federal.
But states, the, the federal refers to the state.
Sure.
Yeah, but...
Does Arizona have a program, or is it still federal?
This is through the federal.
Okay. Like, now Colorado is through the state, certain states.
And I'm happy to send you the information.
Mrs. Cox, could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
For a retiree, as Mr. Cox was using the example, could the retiree stay on the plan and still have the spouse buy on the open market?
The short answer is, I'm not sure. My, my gut tells me probably not, only because you're, you're looking at the household income and, but the, the rule has, the rule has, is, is looking at the employee-only coverage and premium for that, and then you're doing those calculations. But again, you know, it's like a seven-page document that I got like an hour and a half ago. So, but it's just, it just, and it's because I wanted to have something in my brain that was something different than a forty-eight percent increase in premium.
And I looked at that when I first retired, and we didn't meet the threshold.
Well, the premiums weren't like that.
Yeah, it was like nine point one. We couldn't do that. We would have, and it would have been like two hundred dollars. My biggest concern, sorry, Jeff Cox, my biggest concern is that with this political climate, I don't know if there's going to be an ACA next year, you know, with the way the Republicans have fought to, to tear apart versus who's coming in next. Will it, you know, will they tear that apart? Then where am I in two years? You know, is it safer for me to, I'd rather stay on this, because I know this. I know these doctors who take this. I think I've earned this after thirty-six years. That's, that's kind of where I am. I, I would rather stay in something I know, and something I can work with, and something I can call down to the district and ask questions about, rather than go through a government entity that might not be there next year.
Well, you can buy the plan from a local agent, too. You know that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Because then you have somebody local that you can talk to. I just wanted to have some options other than what I'm looking at. That's all.
Right. And I did that as well when I first retired.
So, and again, the options are still there.
And I, I, I don't like, Kristi Look, but it's not, if that doesn't work, if a retiree stays, then the problem is, once you don't take the retiree insurance, and you don't take that benefit, you'll lose it forever, correct? I can't like, decide as a retiree, I'm not going to take the retiree benefit for one year on PREO, then come back, and then seven, five, ten, eight years later, retire. I've lost that benefit because I left the plan. Am I correct? Isn't that policy, you can't leave and come back as a retiree instrument?
That's how it's stated, but that's a clarifying question for this week, because, again, I don't know if they've taken that into account of the fact that we do have several employees who take the PREO option, because they have to by law before they can come back into the classroom setting. So that's...
But they stayed in the plan. See, that's the difference. We stayed in the, in the insurance plan as a retiree.
Right.
And paid retire, regular premiums, not retiree premiums.
Is that our policy, or is that...
So we literally leave the plan and then try to come back. I, granted, I can get it as an employee if I PREO, come back that next year, but then seven years down the line, do I now lose my retiree premium that I earned from the district for till sixty-five?
And are no, and are no longer able...
At some point. But I'm, I'm talking about, well, because you stated if you don't, if there, can you get that if the retiree stays, but you go out for your dependents? And you said no. But if I leave, then I lose that. So I didn't want that to really be looked at as an option unless I'm willing to give up what I do get as a retiree.
See, and I think that's the clarifying question, is do we, do you, as an individual who's a district employee currently, who elects to go on PREO, and then come back as an active employee in year two? an active employee in year two, and you stay teaching for another five years, ten years, however long, and then you actually retire at that point, do you get to then go back on the retiree rate for till you're sixty-five or till the age of Medicare, whatever policy is stating? And I think that's just something we need to, again, just clarify because you're not, in my view, you're not, you're not not accepting or taking the medical because you are, you're just on that different retiree tier.
Right.
And you're just moving to the active portion in year two, and then going back to the retiree plan in year six, or whatever it may be.
Right.
I don't see it as you're leaving the, if you were leaving the plan altogether and not as a retiree or an active employee, and you were electing to go somewhere else outside the district.
I believe that's...
Right.
And that's the question. Because currently in our policy, if you were to completely go away, then you would not be able to come back. And so that would be another one of the policy questions, is would we allow our people who leave for one year but continue to work for us through a process like PREO, would that be an exemption of policy that they would remain on the retiree plan? So I don't believe that's legal, and I'm not sure about that.
I didn't realize that was a concern. I mean, the more reading...
Did we ever get an answer to the buyout question?
To the buyout question. Legal has that question, and she sent a response, but it requires some follow-up and further discussion with the district.
What was that question?
My question was just, is it legal for us to buy out our retirees and offer that type of option? So, it's a complicated question that...
Yeah, there was some, there needs to be some back and forth dialogue and conversation with that.
Yes, please, at the new rate.
Is there any entity like an HMO or something available to our employees who are twenty-five years old right now, or even thirty-two years old, and they see this coming, and they think, oh, my gosh, what am I going to do? I don't think I can work till I'm sixty-five. Some will, but some are not, for various reasons, not be able to do that. Where they could be putting money aside out of their check, and it would, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be taxed on that amount of money, and then they could put it aside and use it later to pay these, toward the premiums.
I think Jamie might be able to answer that question. I'll put you on the spot, but I know that's your area.
Health savings account.
A health savings, you can use that.
Yeah.
Okay, I meant, I meant a health, HSA.
Yes.
An HSA, that's what I meant. And so you can, I didn't know you could use that money to do this.
You can use health savings account monies to pay for COBRA premiums and post-retirement premiums as well.
Okay. And are we, are we making that very clear to our employees that, when they sign on, or reminding them five years later or ten years later when they haven't done it?
We don't have an available...
I think maybe we need to push that because this is an emergency. I mean, this is dire. This is dire.
Well, I think it behooves all the employees to really pay attention, though. It's not, you know, this is, everybody has a responsibility for their healthcare. And the fact that the trust, you know, really bent over backwards to try to offer this, it really isn't up to the district to constantly remind people to plan for their future. I just want to make that clear because it really feels like, you know, all of this healthcare stuff is somehow the board's responsibility, and everybody has their own responsibility for their own healthcare. So...
I agree. You know how I believe in personal responsibility?
I understand that.
However, we're in the business of education.
Right.
And what happens when you're twenty-one years old, the last thing you think of is, I'm going to retire, just seems so far, just the way it is.
No, but probably one of the things that our twenty-something-year-old teachers are thinking about is, I'm not getting all the special benefits that people who are having their dependents subsidized, or people who are retiring are potentially looking at. And so I'm sure we have a large portion of employees that are looking at that. And, you know, I don't think that twenty-something-year-old employees necessarily need to be so concerned with their healthcare, but they are concerned with the dollars in their paychecks, which aren't there primarily because we've been paying for this. Does that make sense?
That definitely makes sense, and everyone needs to be aware of that.
Right.
But I don't think it's the board's responsibility to let them, no, but I think there could be procedures built in to the lifetime of an employee working for the district where this is brought to their attention.
Do we have, oh, please, will you come up, and will you also introduce yourself?
Yeah. Give us off the teacher of the district. Mike, you can help me out with the name of the guy that...
The district, the district has to offer, like, information for our teacher pension.
We were just talking about, we were just chatting about...
We are required by law to offer information about the kinds of savings that's available for not only teachers, but for all staff to save for retirement.
And we have. So that's, like, our district has offered us that. So if we chose to, we could have signed up with the guy, and he could have talked us through everything. We could have talked about our retirement. We could have talked about our insurance. We had that option available to us. So the district did offer that to us. So it is, like you're saying, it is on us.
Right.
But you, as a district, did provide that service to us. I just want you, just, I want to clarify that. For what you're saying is, you guys actually did do that for us.
Well, I know Mr. Collins, you know, did a big presentation on it, but what I was referring to is constantly reminding people, don't forget to plan. Don't forget to plan.
And we use the teacher, I think it's the teacher's pension, I understand it does that as a group, even though it's not just teachers.
Got you.
It's really hot in here.
Is it?
Am I the only one that's hot?
No.
No.
Carol Nowkowski, employee. I meant to email this, and I've had a grandbaby since, so I didn't get my email in. So I need some clarification, Jamie. I know, and possibly Chairman Cox. Last week, when Mr. Collins presented, he said, our current trust, we have, we have made the decision to balance out, if I understood him correctly. And I meant to go back and review the video, but, so that's why I'm asking, is currently what's given to us as a trust is, this is your retirement number, this is your employee number, and we've made the choice to balance it? Did I understand him?
I'm not sure I understand what he could have been talking, a retirement number or that.
So, for instance, our retirement number that we're given is the eleven, or the one thousand, and the employee number, seven hundred, let's just say. And then we've made the choice to make a balance, like, to...
I'm sorry, you're talking about the rates?
The premium, rates.
Yes, there was a decision made at some point in time, I don't know when, to do what's called a blended rate.
Correct.
And that is where the active employees basically assume a good portion of that retiree rate.
Okay. So then my question is, is that an option for this plan, or it's not an option at all?
NAEBT does not allow a blended rate for retirees.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if that was a district option to plan that since the different trust.
They set the terms, and we can either accept them or reject them, but we can't change them. Do we have more discussion from the community members? So the question before us right now is, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't, no, he was done with the presentation. Because I've got a lot of stuff to answer here, so.
Okay.
Kristy Lokitis. I just, there were a couple of things. I'd written it down because I thought I was going to have to present, you know. So I had, I obviously, I'm concerned about the retiree premiums because I will be heading in that thing. And I still, I just, and I know it's set by them. I just have concerns that the numbers seem so different. The retiree, it was funny because it didn't hit me till yesterday or today, that when I was looking at those numbers, the retiree increase, if you're just a retiree, it's a forty-nine percent increase in premiums. But if you are a retiree child, it's a hundred and forty percent increase in premiums. And I find that interesting because children are typically not your thing. So I find that actuarially interesting that that's a hundred, like I said, in fact, every retiree increase is over a hundred percent, except for the retiree themselves. And it was, like I said, forty-nine percent-ish. I mean, we're using the numbers. I know they're not a hundred percent set in stone. But why are the dependents, and I know you don't have the answer for this, but I just find that concerning that one is about fifty percent and the other's a hundred to a hundred and forty percent difference? And I find that odd, that that would actuarially really be that way. And so that was it. Another concern was about that, and it sounds like you're going to try to get some clarity at the meeting tomorrow. So that was part of some of the things I was going to state, just because I am concerned about, mine wasn't as much about going on the marketplace for myself. I was looking at possibly doing that next year through PREO for my husband and son, but I don't want to lose my retiree dependent benefit, whatever we go to, seventy percent, eighty percent. And by the way, I appreciate that percentage. I want to state that. I do find that wonderful. But I can't lose that. If, but if I go out on the marketplace, am I going to be able to do anything since I stay and my spouse and son would be leaving? Then when I come back, if they leave, eight years down the road, five, seven, whatever, I decide to fully retire, if they have left as a dependent of mine, even if they come back as an employee, then do I lose the opportunity of having them on the retiree insurance in seven, eight years? Because, again, those benefits are, if you leave them, you lose them. That has always been my understanding. So I, it makes a difference on what I would do and how that would be handled. I am a little concerned. I felt a little better after some of the statements about what happens in three years. But I am a little worried about what, I mean, at the end of that three years, I know we're somewhat probationary, but is it probationary where our rates could go? But it sounds like they won't go more than their percentages ever. Is that correct?
Well, I can't speak for that a hundred percent, but typically speaking, they would adjust along with the rest of the group.
Because we have no buy-in. So basically, we're buying in with elevated premiums at this point.
Correct.
Because we're paying more than they are.
Correct.
You know, so our premiums are elevated. So at the end of those three years, though, if our numbers don't look good, what can happen? And that worries me. And then if we dissolve the trust as a result of that, that money is now gone. And that was my last thing. Finally, with remaining monies, I do think maybe we should consider keeping it open, if at all possible, in case something like that happens. But not all of that money is taxpayer money. I've been paying into that trust for twenty-eight years with dependent premiums, so thousands and thousands of dollars. Now, I know there's not a box with my name on it saying this is her money, and I understand that it's a group money, but it isn't all taxpayer money. I spent twenty, like I said, twenty-eight years of my money has gone in to that as well. So I just want that to be kept in mind when we talk to council and address that, because I know that was a concern about it coming back and how it would be handled. So if we can get clarification and make sure that's addressed when it's done.
If I may, and we had, I had a conversation with our council this morning, actually this afternoon, and the way that the resolution to dissolve the trust is written is that the money would remain in the trust and continue to be spent on benefits.
Okay.
As opposed to coming back to the district and general fund and then reducing tax rate.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear, right?
And so that was her recommendation, and that's what the statement in the resolution is.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good. Because like I said, I know that wasn't all just that kind of money. So that's great. Thank you. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make, and thank you, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make the point that I know a lot of people paid dependent premiums for many years out of their own pocket, but this trust was so mismanaged, and the taxpayer did bail out the trust repeatedly. So I just, I understand what you're saying, that you paid money into it, but this was all but bankrupt. And we're lucky that we, you know, made it through. We're lucky that we had the Prop 123 money to dump into it. We're lucky that we continually poured money into the trust to keep it open. So I just want to point that out because this is why this is such an opportunity for us. This is an education facility. This is, we have no business in the insurance industry. We need to make really good choices with our health in the early stages, in the kindergarten stage, so that we're not facing these problems. But we just can't afford to manage this monstrosity ever again. This is not the wheelhouse of educators at all. And it's not that we didn't have good people trying to serve and make the right decisions, but as this gentleman pointed out, you know, with the help of both parties, I might add, healthcare has become a total cluster, you know what. So I just think it's time for us to, and we're so lucky that we got this invitation to even join another trust. I can't express what a fortune, what a fortunate circumstance this is, and the timing as well. Because I have, I have a letter here from, from the Arizona School Board Association denying to even respond to our RFP in twenty seventeen because we were in such dire straits and our financials were so awful. The fact that a trust even wants us is, is really good, in my opinion. But I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Just a, just a quick point on, on insurance premiums, and then I have a question. When you go back to 2010 to 2013, I paid about seven thousand two hundred dollars a year for my health insurance. Whether you like the Affordable Care Act or hate the Affordable Care Act, whether you want to tear it apart or uncouple, it's added twenty thousand dollars to my annual insurance premium. That's not my number. That's the federal marketplace number. What you're seeing right now today, and let's stop being Republicans and Democrats for a minute. Let's just, let's just be honest, because we all have to consume health insurance because it's the way that it all works. We're seeing unintended consequences of a law, and the ripples are coming through our district. So I'm not worried about Republican or Democrat. I'm worried about, can I go to a doctor? Can I get my kid into an emergency room when they break their arm? I mean, those are the things that worry me as a parent. And so I think it's obscene that I have to pay an extra twenty thousand dollars a year here ten years later because some guy stroked a pen up in Washington DC and made a decision that we all needed certain things. And again, it's not a Republican or Democrat issue. It's literally, how do we take care of ourselves as individuals? And as an employer, that then trickles down to how do we take care of our staff and our employees? So my question, soon as they're done talking, sidebar. So my question is, is we have two resolutions in front of us, one to join NAEBT and one to dissolve the trust. Do we have to act on both of those tonight?
That, that would be a legal question, as I look to Jamie, who does this much more than we do up here. I believe, I would say that we definitely have to get Legals, Legal to buy in on that or to give us some feedback on that. But I believe that, that does have, does have to happen because I don't believe we can have involvement in two different trusts at the same time. We either have to accept the invitation and go in that direction and then move to...
My, my thought, because we have unanswered questions, and our unanswered questions impact people. It's not that, not that we have a little bit of contract language over here. We literally need to know, you know, is an employee on PREO still our employer, aren't they? Those types of questions. And so because of that, my thought process is, is we make it contingent on the answers to dissolve our trust.
Do we have a deadline that we have to respond to their invitation?
We do.
Yes, we do.
And what is that?
And that's why it's on today's agenda.
Right.
Okay.
Because they meet this week to actually officially act on it.
Okay.
So we have our deadline. I, I guess I would respectfully ask, Mr. Mastin, if the answers to those questions make a difference as we look at the amount of money and the difference between the two trusts and what we would save. And so as we're talking about a question that would preclude the decision based on the impact for a few people, and if you hadn't answered that for that one year, these four people are not going to be included in the benefit, would that change the court's decision?
I don't think it would necessarily change mine, but I think that, I don't like going into things with unanswered questions that will affect people.
I understand those concerns, too. I do think we have enough information in front of us to decide whether we want to accept this invitation or not, based on what we would be comparing it to with the existing trust and the rising premiums. One thing, and this was suggested to me, but one thing we could do, if we do vote to accept the invitation, we can also give direction to our financial director about... to accept the invitation, we can also give direction to our financial director about, just advice on how to proceed with offsetting the cost to retirees. And, and so we could leave that for a decision to make at a future date.
And that typically would come before you during the compensation package, the special meeting that we have, which would be in early March. So as we present the entire compensation package for 2021, that would be included in that, in that presentation and action item for you to either approve or not approve.
Lots of unknowns, lots of variables.
It's true, there are. I mean, the big thing to me is whether or not we could kind of maneuver so that the people who retire aren't designated as retirees during that one-year period, because that would make a big difference.
And that would be, they may not be able to remain in NAEBT if they're not our employee, but we certainly could do policy language on that, so they wouldn't lose their benefit as a retiree if they left for a year and came back. So there, I think there are some policy language decisions that we can still consider as a district that, that are irrespective of the, of the rules for us joining this trust.
And, and understand here, I'm trying to walk the fine line, because I really don't want to create a bunch of different classes based on situations, but I also understand the financial impact here to, to individual people. And so, so I'm kind of looking at this and going, okay, how does that balance out? Because as, as much as I see the cost savings, there's a part of me that sits here and goes, who do we hurt while we save money? And, and honestly, going to that 70 to 80% range actually is going to wind up costing us some money. We're not really saving money going to NAEBT, because we have, we're already raising that retiree portion, so.
Yeah, just to clarify that, either, any way you look at it, we're still not lowering premiums from what we're currently paying this year. So whether we stay with our EBT or go with NAEBT, we're still going to see an increase. So there will be an increase in expenditures to the district with medical coverage for next year. So the savings really just lies in, if we don't go with LHS EBT, that's the savings from not having to fully pay 15 and 1/2% and an increase, and only have to pay 2 and 1/2%.
Yeah. So, question on PREO. If I were in the queue to go on PREO this year, can I reverse that process?
Yes.
Okay. Second question. At what point do they lose, start losing against their retirement benefits?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because somebody made a statement during the discussion that if they didn't take them by a certain period of time, their retirement benefits started to go down.
Right. There was a 10-year window, and we had that freeze for a big part of that time. So at a certain point, at 10 years, my multiplier changed, and I started losing money on retirement, on what I would make per month.
Okay.
So I, so I had to take it at that time, that's, that's exactly when I took it, was the optimal time, I didn't want to leave. So that's how I got retired.
And retirement point is 30 years of service?
Was it 80? 80 points. So it's years, years plus age.
Okay.
Was it 30 or 25?
So as we go forward, I mean, I understand that there are some reservations, and those are noted, but does anyone feel like they couldn't vote tonight?
No.
And do we need to make two motions, one to remove ourselves from the EBT, and then the second one?
Two different actions.
Yeah, so the first one is, the first one is the 3.1, so it would be to accept the invitation.
Then I would move to close discussion.
Second.
Archie Analia?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Don Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
And then I would move that we take action on item 3.1 and approve the resolution to accept membership in the Northwest Arizona Employee Benefit Trust.
Second.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Don Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Archie Analia?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. So on item 3.2, this is discussion and possible action regarding resolution to dissolve the Lake Havasu Schools Employee Benefit Trust. Do I have a motion to open discussion?
Madam, madam president, I would move that we approve item 3.2 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Right. And if I may clarify that, in the actual trust document that was emailed that has been updated, the trust would be determined, excuse me, would be terminated effective June 30th, 2020, not February 18th.
Any further discussion?
We added that to the language of the resolution, right?
Correct. The resolution has been corrected.
I do have a question on the June 30th. I know that there are some bills that are outstanding. How does that work if we dissolve the trust for any outstanding bills that may be coming through?
Isn't it still like an 18-month wind down?
Yeah. And it's on number three in the resolution.
And one concern that came up was with the Mayo Clinic. So with the NAEBT, and I know you know this, so you can correct me if I get it wrong, the NAEBT does not use the Mayo Clinic, except in cases of emergencies or transplants. So the Mayo would be off the table if we move forward, or we did decide to move forward with the NAEBT. The one exception to that is by law, if you are, if you're being treated for pregnancy or cancer, by law, your treatment cannot be interrupted. So if you are currently receiving treatment at Mayo for either of those conditions, that will continue uninterrupted. Is that, do I have that correct?
Well...
That's what Mr. Collins, that's what Mr. Collins said at the presentation.
Will, will the NAEBT follow the law? I would expect him to.
I would expect to, as well.
There's a transition of care process that can be offered to all of your employees.
Okay.
And they'll be given a specified period of time and so forth.
Okay. Just wanted to put that out there, in case there are people who fall into those categories and, and did not know that. Any further? Oh, I'm sorry? Yes.
One of the nice things, too, about the transition into the NAEBT is that the vast majority, and Jamie, correct if I'm wrong, vast majority, if not all, of the vendors in the NAEBT are the same vendors within NAEBT as EBT. So the transition, I think, is going to be very smooth. And so the managed care, people, the people that, you know, work with those large claims, the transition teams and things, I think you're going to see a nice transition. And so the people that do need to be contacted, that have those extenuating circumstances, I think, I think that's going to get a very smooth process.
And did, did the, did the EBT vote on accepting a TPA? Or, and does that still, but if we, we go to the NAEBT, and, well, I keep saying, if, we've already done that, we accept that they have a TPA in place and... Okay.
All of your decisions, all the decisions that the trust board made were contingent on whether or not the, this board made a decision to go into NAEBT. However, they did make a decision to move to Ameribank, who is the administrator for NAEBT.
Okay.
So we would be giving up ECA?
ECA is the pool administrator for NAEBT as well.
Oh, okay, all right.
There's a lot of letters being thrown around right now.
Welcome to my world.
Any other discussion on this before we vote?
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Don Mastin?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Archie Analia?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Do we have any announcements?
No, I think the only thing that I would like to perhaps hear from the board, we are, would be looking at a proposal to come back in early March, because the budget committees, we, we're getting moving forward. And so would you like us to also bring forward some policy recommendations at that time?
Yes.
I'm, would be specifically curious about an 80-80 plan, but what that would look like in terms of increases to staff salary.
80-80?
80-80. 80, 80 for the employees, 80 for the retirees, and then what...
And then having a compensation package that...
Exactly. Because that would, that would get us out from underneath the subsidies, in my opinion, that the employees are subsidized for with their dependent care. That's a special carve-out. And I know that it's a special carve-out for the retirees. But like was just mentioned, the retirees of this district have been subsidized by the employees for a long time. And that was evident in the rate, the difference in the rate structures with the retirees. It was very shocking to this district, but that's a normal practice everywhere else. And so I would just like to see what that looks like. I know that is not what a lot of people want to hear, but I would like to see it anyways.
Do you think there's any way we could get this information at least a day ahead of the, the board meeting about this, to pour over it?
Yes. This was a little short notice on that.
Just to, just to backtrack to what Nicole said, and you heard me mention that earlier, that it's one pot of money, so if we pay money benefits over here, it takes out a salary over there. As you guys go through, go through your process of retirement in PREO, the more money you get into a paycheck, the better. So while you may not get a health insurance benefit over here, you may actually stack more into your retirement over here. So there may be an off, an off-sided benefit to doing something like that.
Anything else? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Archie Analia?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.